Been here so much. We're gonna start out tonight's meeting with an invocation from Pastor Lindell Holliday. He is from First Baptist Church.
Lindell Holloway.
Lindell Holloway. Here's from First Baptist Church in Weatherford. Pastor?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight. First of all, we thank you so much for the leadership of our city. We pray for them, that you'd continue to have your hand on them and guide them. We thank you for this great city. We thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight and again, celebrate and remember Roger Gizzard, and we pray for his family and their continued healing, especially for Tyler, as he still is recuperating and healing and progressing. And God, we just pray you'd guide our steps tonight, and the things that we do in this city would bring glory and honor to you. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum present. Item three on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance to United States and Texas Flags. Mayor Pro Tem Hattie Walder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item four on the agenda is Items of Community Interest. Sharon Hayes?
Just one thing, Mayor. Last Thursday, we had the opportunity to present a show, a fireworks show for the community. We had about 10,000 folks there. We had about 40 city employees, public safety, parks, sanitation, and a whole bunch of volunteers. It really helped to make it a great event. And it's what being a strong community is all about, to be able to do those things and offer the opportunities for the folks to come. And so, anyway, it was a great event, and appreciate it for those who were able to attend.
Well done. Did anybody raise your hand if you saw the fireworks or went to the fireworks show? A lot of hands out there. Well done. Thank you for being there. Item five on the agenda is Presentations and Proclamations. Five A is Presentation of a Proclamation Naming July the 18th, 2019, as Live Like Roger Day, to the Gizzard family, and Presentation of Proclamation on behalf of Mayor Steve Dixon of the town of Flower Mound to the Gizzard family. Counsel, please join me. Y'all are gonna have to work with me a little tonight, because I'm about as nervous as I've ever been in front of a crowd. If y'all'd like, come on up, please. Join. I'm gonna start this evening with a presentation on behalf of the City of Flower Mound. This is from Mayor Steve Dixon. Apparently, somewhere down the line, your husband and father had a wonderful impression on him, so upon hearing about the tragedy, Mayor Dixon reached out to us, and the City of Flower Mound issued this proclamation on his behalf. I'd like to respectfully honor. And so, in preparing for tonight, I always try to be really organized and get my thoughts together. And so, on five or six occasions, I thought about what this meant to our community and what it meant to our city. And every time I tried to make points I wanted to make, I ended up throwing the paper away or deleting my thoughts, because there's nothing else to be said. I can't top the story. I can't give a better testimony. I can't reinforce the kind of man, father, husband, business owner, community leader, volunteer, and believer that Roger Gizzard was in our city of Weatherford, Texas. And so, the only thing that I can say from you, other than us offering up the proclamation that I'll read in just a moment, is that this is also a call to service and a call of expectations from the mayor and the council to our citizens. We're asking you politely to, while July the 18th is Live Like Roger Day, we're asking you to carry this forward. If you want to honor Roger, I think this family would tell you that that's exactly the way you do that. So, while the proclamation is for one specific day of the year, which happens to be his birthday, we're gonna ask you to keep that in mind. We're gonna offer that to you as citizens, and we're gonna operate that way, and we encourage you to do the same. Only I have one for you, but I'd like to read it. So proclamation reads, "The City Council of the City of Weatherford, Texas hereby proclaims July the 18th, 2019, as Live Like Roger Day." How about a round of applause for that? Gizzard was born on July the 18th, 1946, and whereas July the 18th, 2019, would have been Roger's 73rd birthday. And whereas Roger was a Christian man, who was sincerely kind-hearted and extraordinarily generous. And whereas Roger was a dedicated supporter and proponent of education. And whereas Roger provided an exceptional illustration of a lifelong community servant. And whereas Roger touched many hearts and shaped many lives in Weatherford. And whereas it is a desire of the Weatherford City Council that everyone who wishes to honor Roger might be wholeheartedly encouraged to do so by adopting a spirit of volunteerism and by committing to serve one another and our community in the manner and to the degree that Roger served. Now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby proclaim July the 18th, 2019, as Live Like Roger Day in the city of Weatherford, Texas. In testimony whereof, witness my hand and the seal of the great city of Weatherford, Texas, this ninth day of July of 2019." Thank you so much. We've got a couple other things to y'all say. Things before we move forward. There's some special folks here tonight, just to reinforce that this community has for Roger Gizzard. County Judge Pat Dean is here. I see Mark Povero. Judy Flanagan is here also, from State Representative Phil King's office. Allison Baker is here from the Economic Development Group. Judy is gonna come forth with a special gift from Austin and from Representative King's office. Judy? And while we celebrate Roger on the 18th of July as his birthday, but remember, this is a call to service, a kind call to service. Let's carry this forward in this community. Let's live like Roger every day. Thank you all. Again, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thanks for working with a nervous mayor tonight. Item five B on the agenda is the Presentation of the Airport Feasibility Study. Sharon Hayes? Brad Burnett, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brad Burnett, Assistant City Manager. In April 2018, we contracted with Randall Wedeman to perform an airport feasibility study for us. It took about a year to conduct the study, and he is here tonight to present it to us.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I've got just a short presentation, and I guess you can see it on your screens, and we'll just jump right into it. We went through a full process of feasibility. What we were looking at is, would an airport work here? And, you know, we looked at criteria and collected information and did a survey and did some forecasting and came out with, you know, what a facility would look like. And then we did some financial performas and economic impact analyses on that to see what it would look like. And from this study, we would know pretty quickly whether or not an airport made sense or did not make sense. Looking first at the criteria that we examined, first of all, we wanted to know, you know, is there a potential for based aircraft to locate here on a 20, you know, looking forward 20 years? Was there a need in the business community for something like this? Is there land available? Could you put an airport anywhere? What would the airport earn? I mean, would it pay its way? Would the local government here share the financing that's necessary to make something like this happen? And is there political will? And I guess that still is yet to be decided, to a certain extent. And then, looking at sort of a cost benefit or a benefit cost, depending upon how you look at it. Those were the initial criteria that we examined for this. In collecting information, we looked at the potential market service area, and that was loosely defined as a 30-mile radius around the community. That incorporates a lot of different counties, but really, when we did the survey, we figured out that a lot of this would be coming from Tarrant County as well, as Parker County itself. We looked at demographics, the fact that your growth rate here is three times higher than the national average. There's, you know, the fact that Fort Worth is close by is a blessing and a curse. You know, they, all of that growth and activity is pushing your way. So how do you manage that? That's sort of where we're going with this. And one of these things is to harness some of this in terms of the economic aspects of an airport. So that's what we were looking at in the business and economic development trends. We looked at the current and future roles of existing, of the airports in the Texas aviation system. It's interesting that the Council of Governments did a system plan a number of years ago. I happened to work on it, so I knew what the results were. And one of them was that there was a new airport needed in the Fort Worth area, sort of to the west, just because the demand was so great that it's pushing that direction. So we did a survey, and we sent out just a little over 1,000 surveys, and we had a whole bunch of people respond. 90 respondents said they were interested in an airport in this, in Weatherford. Of that, you know, five said maybe, so we threw them out. Eighty-five said yes, and they represented 109 aircraft. And then, after the survey time period was over, we had, you know, five or six more that said yes, that came in after that. But anyway, to do the forecast, we cut that number in half, the 109 in half, came up with 54 aircraft, that we said, okay, this is our baseline demand. In that group, there were two jets, there were 14 twin-engine aircraft, and then a lot of single-engine and one helicopter. By the way, the little dots that you see there, those yellow things, those were the positive respondents for, you know, surveys, people that said, yes, we'd be interested. A number of you were here when we did the SWOT analysis early on in the study, and we looked at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Just a quick recap, you know, there were geographic, locational strengths. There were, at the time, we heard political support. The city has a brand that they're working on. Weatherford College was behind it. When we looked at weaknesses, you know, there were other airports nearby, mineral wells and some others. There's topography, there's towers that you have to get around, and, you know, there's always the issue of political unity and whether or not there's a financial base to make something happen. When we looked at the opportunities, there was a serious economic development opportunity here, where, you know, a new airport could attract new businesses to Weatherford and also high-quality jobs. When we did, I'm jumping ahead, but when we did an economic impact analysis, we saw that there's over 150 jobs created by an airport like this. And that's, you know, full-grown airport. There's revenue generations, there's positive trends in business aviation as well. The threats typically for any airport is political and economic funding. You know, if you don't have funding, that's the mother's milk of any infrastructure project, so you gotta have that. You have to have a long-term mindset that says, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, but this is where we want to go. And so, that's an issue there. We did a forecast, and rather than go through the whole process there, just cut to the results. And the results were this. We started out indicating that there were 54 current-based aircraft, possible growing to 85. And the numbers got a little messed up here, but 19,000 aircraft operations, growing to 34,000. So that's a fairly good, busy airport for a general aviation facility. And this is a 20-year forecast. We did some facility needs, and essentially, the, an airport is built around, you know, what they call a critical aircraft. The critical aircraft is the largest aircraft to regularly use the airport. And so, in this case, it was a business jet. I think the aircraft itself was a Cessna Citation 10. That has a characteristic where it would need 6,000 feet of runway, 100-foot runway width. Along with that came a number of different landside facilities, like hangars and apron area and a small terminal building and a fuel farm and that kind of thing. This is the prototypical layout of an airport like that. It's pretty standardized. You know, there's a landside area that's all sort of grouped together, and then the runway, you know, with a full parallel taxiway. We put some cost to this, and we were not concerned, you know, let's put it this way. We didn't cut any corners on the cost. We gave sort of a full estimate of what it would cost. And we came out with about $48.5 million, and that included a land acquisition of about $15 million. Now, again, there's areas that, I mean, if there was an area that could be cut, that would be one of them. But the other areas assumed certain things about topography, how thick the pavement's going to be, all of those sort of things. So, the initial summary of the findings was that there was sufficient demand to justify the airport. If we had an airport that was built to a 6,000-foot runway length, it would make the airport jet capable. You could have flight training, you could have a fixed base operator that could make money out there. We looked at some of the previous work that had been done on a study years ago for site selection, and sure enough, there are airport sites that are, that would be suitable for an airport in the area. And so, we then moved to the next steps, was the financial feasibility and the benefit cost. So, the financial projections, we looked at two scenarios. One was, you know, because not knowing what sort of model that you would look, management model, we did one where a fixed base operator ran the airport, you know, under contract to you. We did another one where you ran the airport and collected, you know, hired your own people, did all the thing, but you also collected the fuel flowage and you did, you know, you had, you didn't have to pay out money to have a third party do a number of those things. So we looked at how this, we did some performas on each one of these sets, and we came up, and again, I'm cutting to the bottom line here, we came up with the fact that if the city is the fixed base operator, it had the best outcome. And that was primarily because you were selling the fuel, you were keeping the money from the sale of that fuel versus having a private FBO do that and sell the fuel and collect that money and give you a, like a 10 cent a gallon type thing, rather than a dollar a gallon. So, we also looked at whether you would build hangars or let private industry build them, and the bottom line was, if you had a minimal number of hangars and you sold the fuel and you did all of that, that was sort of the best option. Almost $3 million cumulative net operating over a 20-year period. If we included the debt service, you know, for building the hangars and doing that kind of thing, the cumulative was about a half a million in the hole, which meant that, you know, and by that 20th year, you would be making around, the clear, the money that you would be clearing was about, it's almost $500,000. So, 21 years, you're actually breaking even on building hangars and doing the things that you need to do to make all of that work. Then comes the other part, which is, you know, that's doing the investing in the facility, but it's not, does not cover the match, the local match, that you'd have to come up with if you were getting a grant to build the rest of it. So, the 10% match, which is normal for most airport projects, would be four and a half million dollars. You know, talking with Tech dot, there just is a shortage of money, and they don't have money. And so, you know, theoretically, the match would be higher than that if you really wanted this to happen. And, you know, so a 20% match is 9 million, you know, if it went 50-50, it's 22.5. Again, there's a different way of, I mean, this is where creative financing comes in and public-private partnerships and all of those kinds of things would have to be examined. But looking at the average subsidy for operations, in other words, if you were to take that, you know, half a million dollars that you have, that it showed being in the hole over 20 years, is $25,000 a year. Just to give you an idea, the first-year operating deficit would be over $100,000. And when I'm talking operating, that's just to run the airport. But the 20-year operating surplus, by the time you get to year 20, it's, you're making almost a half a million dollars a year, you know, to the good. So you've paid off your hangars and that kind of thing, and now you're actually accumulating operating revenue, which obviously could be used for debt service or whatever. We did an economic impact analysis that showed in 20 years at full bore, the airport would be generating over 150 jobs, total output over $20 million. It would be paying, well, it would not be paying any taxes, but the people who use the airport would be paying over a million dollars in state and local taxes, according to the unplanned modeling. So, there is that side of it as well. We did a decision matrix that looked at those criteria. If you recall, at the beginning, we talked about kind of a decision criteria that you would need to figure out, you know, is this something we want to do or something we don't want to do? And when we looked at the 20-year forecast, and I just will tell you that in the 11 or 12 airports that our partner on this, Mark Pazlick, has actually built, brand-new airports, this was the most feasible of all of them in terms of forecasts. All of the others had less activity forecast for them, and those airports were constructed. The business and industry need, I think through our survey, we did find that there was a significant business-industry desire for a facility like this. The land availability, we left neutral, because we haven't done a site selection. We know that there's property out there, if you look at it, topography maps and so forth. There is land available, but whether or not you could get it, that's another question. So we left that neutral at three. Now, the net revenue analysis, it's always gonna be the lowest-rated thing, because that's the money you have to come up with. So that was rated a one. If you decide, decided to take it on and do the local share financing, that would counterbalance the fact that you had to come up with the money. So that was rated a five. The political will, you know, it's usually not unanimous, so we ranked that a four. And again, that assumed that there was a desire to do this. You all may, you know, go into some sort of session at some point and make a decision, this isn't something we want to do. That's pretty easy then. If it's something you don't want to do, then it won't happen. That's, that follows. But if it is going to happen, you know, this is sort of the path that we assume it would take. The cost-benefit analysis, if you look at it from a standpoint of economic impact over your costs, well, it's, the balances favors the benefit. You know, if you have $20 million a year that's being generated and 150-plus jobs, and, you know, if you're spending, you know, four and a half million or whatever, and that's, and we're talking year after year after year, that sort of sets that benefit-cost analysis. And then, the system plan role, while this airport location wasn't specific in the system plan, the system plan did draw a ring around Tarrant and Parker Counties and said, there needs to be a new airport somewhere in this area. So, we took that as a positive and ranked that as a four. So, anything under a three, it'd be like unfavorable. Anything, in terms of average scores, anything over a three would be somewhat favorable. We came out with a 3.9 under this sort of ranking, and, you know, so, in other words, the airport would work if you built it. The question is whether or not there's the wherewithal, the desire, to do it. Without local share financing or the political will, the airport, you know, cannot be developed. That's just as simple as that. The state and federal funding shortfalls are likely to increase that local share percentage from 10% to something greater than that. Again, if you, if you were, you know, if there's a $15 million property acquisition fee, cost, and somehow that's, you know, handled in some way that, you know, either a public-private partnership or something like that, it might reduce that, which then could contribute to the local share as well. The next step, if you were going to do a next step, a site selection study would be needed to determine. be needed to determine if that adequate site could be found. And then, if you were going to do a step beyond that, there would be an environmental study that would have to be done that would say, not only is this a suitable site, but it's environmentally, there's no significant impact. So, basically, at this point, you know, we're telling you that an airport would be feasible if you built it. You know, the decision really rests with the community at this point, and so we would kind of hand that over to you and let you all decide what you, where you want to take it. So with that, that's the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions, comments, counsel?
I have one question. Did you want to go first? What, could you go back to your summary slide?
Yes.
Just real quick. What limitations does the state funding have with regard to, say, you wanted to do an SPE, Special Purpose Entity, or private, you like to call it private, but what limitations are there for funding, for the funding mechanism? Are there any limitations at the state level?
As long as it comes to the city.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind, if you please step forward so we can have you on the record, please.
This is Bill Mackey. He's with Tech dot Aviation.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
All right. Bill Mackey with Tech dot Aviation. The easiest way to explain that, as long as the funds come through the city, how y'all got it to us, it works.
So, the city, city's only limitation would be the conduit?
Yes. Yeah, it would be the conduit to get the local share up to us.
So if there was a special purpose entity, an SPE, and it funded it, because obviously the state doesn't have unlimited funds, if it was funded and we were just the conduit to it, it would still qualify for the funding portion?
Yes.
Thank you for your willingness to answer that. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Great question.
I had a question. You had mentioned that this ranked really high on feasibility compared to the 12 that you've done prior to that were built. Can you reference how well the 12 that were built prior fit the model that was projected for them? Are they meeting the expectations of the model? Or how have they performed?
Well, I know some of them. The one that is, that I worked on with Mark Pazlik was Cleveland, Tennessee, and that's actually exceeded the model. It's, Cleveland is about 30 miles north of Chattanooga, and they all of a sudden showed up with a whole bunch of business jets from Chattanooga that moved up there, and it's fuel sale, everything has exceeded expectations. Some of the airport, the other airports that he's worked on, I know that they are functioning well, but I'm not certain of, as to how well, you know, relative to the projections that were done.
Could you send us a list of those airports?
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
What year are they in? To follow up on his question, you said that Cleveland is doing well and exceeding expectation. What year are they in?
I think they, I'm trying to remember when that was actually opened. It might have been 2015, I think, something like that. So, it's relatively recent, yeah. I'll double-check. I mean, if Mark were here, he could answer the question, but I said, I told him we only have 15 minutes, I could handle this well. I was wrong again, but, anyway. I will, I can, any question that you have that is along those lines, just, you know, get them to me on email, and I will get back to everybody on that.
And then I had, I had one more thing. I kind of wanted you to clarify. Could you clarify who these surveys, the surveys are mentioned repeatedly, how many were sent out in the, sorry, can you clarify who those surveys were sent out to or what type of people received those surveys?
Right. Okay. We sent, they were registered aircraft owners. So, in the FAA's database, they have registered aircraft owners and every, there's an address with those. So we took 1,000 of those and tried to do a 30-mile radius, and in essence, most of those were in Tarrant County. So, just because that's, there's like 4,000 or 5,000 registered aircraft in Tarrant County. So, I mean, it's a huge area, but we took a portion of that that was closest, you know, to Weatherford, and then everybody in Parker County, and then I think there were bits and pieces elsewhere. So, of those, of those 1,000, I think we got 180, whatever, you know, it was listed here, 156 back or something like that, and then 90 of those had expressed interest. And by the time it was all said and done, about 96 of those had expressed interest, but there were some that had, that owned multiple airplanes. And so that's what bumped it to about 115 airplanes.
That's what I was looking for. I was just looking for clarity. It wasn't just a survey that was sent out in the mail. People figured it out, filled it out. It was people that own aircrafts that are looking for places to operate.
Yes. Right. And the reason that we cut it in half is because, in some cases, and just from our experience, when people say they're interested in moving to a new airport, they're interested in finding a cheaper hangar. So, you know, we ended up, the half that we cut were the smaller half, the single-engine airplanes, because they are price-sensitive. We kept, you know, the business jets and those kind of people, because they are less, I mean, they want to go where they want to go. And it's a business need, it's driven, and it makes sense, and money is not, so they're not as price elastic as the smaller aircraft owners.
Any other questions? We thank you for your presentation, sir, and thank you for answering the questions, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Comments or other things before we move forward? Item 6 on the agenda is approval of the minutes. 6A is to consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held June the 25th of 2019. In your packet for your review, are there any corrections or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 25th, 2019.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tim for approval.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Jeff Robinson. Any questions or comments before we move forward and call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Four yays and one recusal. I missed the meeting last time. Item 7 on the agenda is consent agenda items. We have two items on the list. Does anybody have a desire to pull one of these items out? We'll consider items 7A and 7B simultaneously. Any discussion? Call for a motion at this time. There is a motion for approval by Counselman Cleveland, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Discussion? Call for a vote at this time, if you indicate yea or nay for approval. Passes unanimously. Item 8 on the agenda is regular agenda items. 8A is to discuss, consider approval of ordinance O2019-38, Dopping Texas Gas Cost of Service Adjustment, COSA. Brad Burnett, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Brad Burnett, Assistant City Manager. In April, Texas Gas filed their COSA, which met the requirement of filing it by May 1st. The COSA is based on financial results for December 31st, 2018, for that year. The calculation is based on operating expenses, return on investment, and federal income taxes. As part of our agreement with Texas Gas, the COSA is applied, one half of it is applied to the monthly customer charge, and one half is applied to the volumetric rate. This year, the COSA resulted in a decrease in the average monthly bill for residential. The decrease was $1.70 a month. For commercial, it was $9.11 a month, and for industrial, it was $62.78 a month. The new rates will go into effect, the first billing cycle, in August. So tonight, you have the opportunity to accept this, at which rate, it will go into effect in August. You can deny it, it will be appealed to the Texas Railroad Commission, or you can do nothing, and it will be automatically approved July 29th.
Questions on this item from Mr. Burnett? Hearing none, counsel. We do have the speaker card on this item. Mr. Darwin Urey, would you please come forward?
Good evening, sir. How are you?
You get settled up there. If we could have your name and address, and once you get started, Mr. Urey, you're going to have three minutes, okay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I also got the, my name is Darwin Urey, live in 110 Harmon Street here in Weatherford. The Texas Gas Service sent us a notice too, and it looks like the basic rate for the residential, from what I'm showing on my chart, is 75, we get a 75-cent discount. And industry gets a $31.39 cut. In Weatherford, we have a larger amount of lower-income people than we do even the middle class. And, of course, the higher class is not really affected by this, but since 1987, natural gas has gone up 500%, I remember, because I was living here then. And you would think with all the fracking that went on and all the liquefied natural gas that's in storage, that our gas would, natural gas would be cheaper. Now, I have some good things to say about natural gas. It's good to back up to a Dearborn stove in the middle of the winter, and also, it's one of the cleanest burning fuels. But yet, kitchen-table issues are so important here. I hope this council will take this into consideration and ask for a greater discount for the residential rates. You know, the people is what makes a town or a city, and you have to decide, who are you for? Are you for the people or for the utility providers? They are doing great. Their tax cuts that they get, they're just doing great, and the CEO pays through the roof. So I hope you folks will think about this and consider this before you make a decision. The people of Weatherford, and the middle class and the poor, and the working class need a cut. Thank you so much.
Mr. Urey, thank you for being here, sir. Any comments or questions on item 8A? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion at this time. We do have a motion for approval by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, seconded by Curtis Tucker. Discussion before we call for a vote? Call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay on your touchscreens. Passes unanimously. Item 9 on the agenda is future agenda items. Staff?
Yes, sir.
Counsel? Item 10 on the agenda is executive session items. 10A is pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code VTCS, Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551-071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, cause number CV17-1683, Ed Kramer versus IESI Texas Landfill LP. Come back into regular session at 7:38 PM. Item 11 on the agenda is action on executive session items. 11A is to take action if necessary pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code VTCS, Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551-071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, cause number CV17-1683, Ed Kramer versus IESI Texas Landfill LP. Counsel, do you choose to take any action on this item? No.
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to item 12 on the agenda, which is citizen comments on non-agenda items. We have no cards on that. Item 13 is adjournment, the most popular. Motion on the floor by Kevin Cleveland for adjournment. Mayor Pro Tim provides a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Yea or nay? Counsel's adjournment, 7:40 PM. Thank you for your service.